MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of this meeting. First up, we're going to reopen the public hearing that we had about our zoning bylaws. Beth, is there anything new from Code 360 people?
Yes, I heard from them and they should have everything finished December 8.
Okay.
He said if we had any other changes or anything to add, that was my deadline.
And they're, they're going to give us how to present this and all that?
Yes.
Is that, yeah, okay. Is there any more discussion on this?
I'm glad to hear it. I was, I was beginning to think we weren't going to get anything, so I'm glad to know that there is a deadline now. And what do we think the effect of this is going to be on? We're going to, are we going to keep the public hearing open until we get done with, get that back and then close it and then ask for a meeting with the town? And if so, when is that likely to be? Would that be next spring?
I, I think the plan would be to get this done with Code 360. We'll close our public hearing session. And then that'll put us one way or another within six months of a, of a town meeting.
But we don't, we don't have any reading from the select board about when that might, whether it would be a month later or five and a half months later?
We don't know.
Up to us when we'd ask, ask.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're going to schedule their special town meeting at some point, I'd say. Right, Matt? What, what do you hear?
Yeah, the, the goal would be for us to have our, our zoning here, uh, meeting sometime March, February, March. You know, April, whatever, but we're, we're going to, as soon as Code 360 is done and we can finalize everything, we can ask for a special town meeting.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think they're waiting on us. They have other things going on also, correct?
Well, they're not going to, they're not going to schedule a special town meeting. I think they'll work with us. It, yeah, I think, I think the annual meeting is, is going to be scheduled as normal. But the special meeting, they, they know, Chris Braden knows we have a lot of zoning issues and, um, or zoning, zoning items. And they have the charter review that they want to include in that meeting. So I think, you know, when, when we're done, we'll broach the subject to them and, and line it up.
Okay, I, I thought we were kind of in limbo also till they decided, but okay, they're kind of waiting.
I just want to mention that I think we're getting ready to start, at least I'm getting ready to start thinking about the next round. We have this question about updating a sign by law for the enforcement issues that came up last summer or fall. And we have the question about what about internal lighting of gas station signs and I feel like we're going to be walking on the heels of the set of bylaws in front of us if we don't get this resolved quickly. We're going, it's going to slow our, our current work down. So I don't think we've got any crisis yet, but I think we need to keep our, keep our motion headed forward.
That's so. Yes, correct. You're right.
I think, I think we can start working on our next batch. Whenever we, whenever we choose to as a board, uh, I think we can start doing it. And when the Code 360 is done, we can wrap that up and then that's my feeling anyways. But I, I, I also, I've been thinking about it and, uh, you know, just as a, since Peter brought it up about the, the motions, I would like to have the conversation about the Airbnbs, just to have the conversation, not saying that we should do anything. But I think we should, I think Lennox has the, the bylaw they finished. I think we should just take that, maybe as simple as Beth printing it out for, or emailing us all of it and just, just to review it and have a conversation and maybe, maybe it's nothing that we should do, but we should at least cover it and be proactive.
I, I don't think Lennox is, is the best model. That was a very knee jerk reaction and a couple of other towns, Stockbridge and Great Barrington have have developed some, you know, more comprehensive ones, not, not, um,
Yeah.
Not, not as protectionist. I mean, that, that one was written by the innkeeper, by the, the big innkeepers. So you know their motive there.
Yeah, I'm fine taking whatever. It's just something to give us a foundation to work off of.
It was, it was a big discuss, well, that, that gets off the track, but it was a big discussion at, at Berkshire Regional this week.
Yeah.
All that, um, accessory dwelling units was what, what it was housing and accessory dwelling units was the big thing.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit the accessory dwelling also. I think we need to make accommodations, you know, maybe if it's as simple as making the home occupancy, you know, but we can talk about that once we.
Yeah, that, we're getting off the track here. We're still at a public hearing. Peg, you have something?
Yes, um, I'm, I had, is Kathy, uh, we're talking about the public hearing and the bylaws, right?
We are, yes, yes. We got a little sidetracked.
Okay, that's fine. Um, is Kathy Hall here? Cause she called me and asked me to make a comment if she wasn't here at the meeting. I don't know if she's in the audience or not.
I don't see her. You, there she is now. There she is. Okay, Kathy.
Hi. No, but it wasn't. It was in reference to the discussion last time about the roosters. So is this pertinent to what you're speaking of now?
Go ahead.
My concern isn't so much as the noise because I think that was something that was mentioned as the concern that the roosters wouldn't be like restricted, like being in a cage or something. So I, I want to be more proactive and make sure that roosters aren't like, what is it? Free roaming? That if a child's riding a bike or something that goes by the property and the rooster comes out and, you know, scratches the child or whatever. I researched a couple of things on the internet and found that there were different states where roosters came out and attacked children and scratched them and that kind of thing. And as I said at your last meeting, that I recall, and I don't know if I recalled it correctly because it was so many, many years ago that a child was, um, attacked by a rooster. The child contracted a mockjaw and actually died. So that's what came to my head the minute there was talk about a rooster. So, um, that's my concern more than, um, noise. You can't, unless you have it, the rooster caged and put like a cloth over it like you would in a birdcage, um, the rooster's not going to know what time it is. It's not going to know about our noise ordinances. But the noise ordinances really just talk about like machinery not being used before seven o'clock in the morning. So my concern isn't so much as noise, um, although quite loud, um, it, it, my concern is the safety for anybody walking along the property because they, they, they're kind of like a watchdog. So, um, that's all I wanted to say was just to be cautious about, um, what we do concerning the open space and where, you know, the properties are and what type of access, you know, children would have riding their bikes, walking, whatever. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really going to, beginning to see how the town meeting is going to go on this topic. It's going to be.
Right now though, our bylaw says no roosters, correct?
Says nothing.
No, it says, it says up to 10 poultry, but no roosters.
No, are proposed.
Oh, yeah.
Proposed.
That's what I mean. I mean, I'm, that's what I mean. Our proposed bylaw. Yeah. I, I think that it just is a, I mean, I, I like the idea of no roosters in a residential neighborhood to protect the butters on a farm. I mean, I think it's, yeah, but anyways, the people who already have them may be grandfathered. Is that, is that the?
Probably, you, you know, it, it's all until there's a complaint.
That's right.
I don't think we can assume that, Matt. I think if somebody, if somebody has a rooster and if the town takes enforcement action, they would have to claim that they were non-conforming pre-existing use that was legal when it was established. So when the rooster came, came to adulthood, was there a bylaw that allowed for roosters? And I, I think, I'm not sure what the answer would be, but I would put money on the answer being no.
Oh, that's right. We had this conversation about not having a bylaw that allowed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I mean, that, that's the whole issue. Right now it's kind of gray. Um, you know, we do go under the, that they're not agriculture, that they're pets. But that is being challenged across the state. And, um, you know, this is something we did so that people can do it. Not so they can't. We're, we're, you know, that's where I think it's getting confusing is people think we're doing this to restrict it. We're actually doing it to give them an avenue so that it is legal. For those backyard poultry.
Peg Sand is up.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, yes, um, I did research it too this week and I think most of the towns do not allow them. Many of them do not allow them. And if they.
Roosters or chickens in general?
Oh, not chickens. Chickens are fine. Well, the roosters, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear enough. And, um, unless it's on a huge piece of property. Okay, 20 acres or something like that. And the other thing to change the subject, if I may, I just have this question and I want to make sure I understand. The proposed new bylaws that are going to be put forth at some point in time. And maybe Beth or Peter could answer this or Buck or somebody. Are you going to allow parking lots in the downtown area with no special permit? Can you maybe for the next meeting or sometime?
Yeah.
Could you communicate or could somebody communicate that?
Let's just hold on. Well, I think, Peter, do you have it with you?
I'll have to pull it up. I think we've answered it. I just don't remember the answer. I'll, I'll pull it up.
I don't either.
In DCBC that it, a lot would be by right. A multi-story, a multi-story would be by special permit.
I, I agree. They're allowed in the business downtown corridor.
A parking lot?
A parking lot.
Excuse me, CDC?
DCBC.
CDC. What is allowed?
Parking lot is allowed by right.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Well, I, I could maybe.
I'll check it. I'll check it.
Okay, it doesn't have to be denied, Peter, but sometimes, I mean, we're going to be.
Put it to bed right now, Peter.
Yeah.
It'll be a minute, okay?
Oh. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, while we're waiting for Peter to pull that up, uh, just to clarify, and, uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, I'm going to have to recuse for a conflict of interest.
I figured, yep.
Okay.
No problem. You can still comment, however. So.
I can?
I believe so. Uh, you can't vote on anything, but I don't, I don't know if there's going to be anything to vote on.
If you recuse, you can't talk, Buck.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but.
Okay, I've got it. You want to know?
Sure. Do you mind? Thank you. Yes.
This, in the CBC, parking lots would be allowed by right.
CBC.
And then, and then the DCBC, it's, it's a site plan.
No special permit in either one.
That's right.
Okay.
Or how about multi-level, Peter? Please clarify.
That's, that's special permit everywhere.
You got that, Peg?
I do. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sorry, it's special permit everywhere that it's allowed at all, but it's not allowed at all in some of the residential districts. In the RM, the CR.
Right.
RA or the R20 or R30. There's no, no multi-level parking. So the best, the best case that a parking garage can hope for is a special permit in some of the zones.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Hearing no more comments, I would like to continue this public hearing till our next meeting, which would be, let me look here, the December 13th.
I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing on our bylaws till December 13th at 6:00 PM. If that's acceptable?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor, roll call vote. Peg?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck, aye. Okay, it is continued till December 13th. Um, next up, we have split zoning. Everybody knows, I think, knows this property. It's, uh, the old bowling alley on 102. Half of it is in RB, which is residential business and the other is in R30. And I believe what they want to do, the, oh, hey, Beth, can you enable my, uh, sharing, screen sharing?
Buck, do we have somebody who could present what they want to do? Is there somebody here advocating for this?
Yes. Is there?
Why don't we just let them?
Present?
I was going to put the. Proposal beyond what I would suggest.
Mr. West, are you, um, just watching or do you have a proposed, or do you want to talk about this?
I can talk about it and, um, if it's the pleasure of the board, um, wasn't prepared to make a formal presentation, I believe, based on your graciousness and phone call from Tony Carapresso, you folks are willing to discuss this. So the site that we're talking about is the old, um, Lee bowling lanes. And I believe Tony's on here if he wants to jump in as well. Tony represents the seller. I represent the buyer. And as in, as you said, Mr. Donovan, that that property is in a split zone and right now, what we're looking to do is put a car dealership in, which we are allowed to do in the, in the RB zone. It's a buy right. So we're okay there. However, our proposed plan for the dealership needs probably what the footprint of the old bowling alley was there at bowling lanes, that building. But they need to have paved space in the back for cars going in and out and that kind of thing and some limited parking. Now, um, the hard part here is, is that the zoning bylaw as written, maybe this is another one you guys can put on your list of zoning. I served on the Adam zoning board for 10 years. So congratulations on you guys rewriting some of that. But what we have is a split zone. But the Lee zoning does not specifically show exactly where that line is. And so before we get too far into having our clients spend all kinds of money, we figured we'd bring it here to see what the take on the board might be based on the fact that, um, we don't really know and it's not addressed, um, specifically in, um, the lead, uh, zoning as to how a rear line is set or anything to that matter, uh, based on um, what's written in the zoning law. Now, we do have space because the property, and I don't know if you have it on the map in front of you, Mr. Donovan, that you could share on the screen, but.
I'm trying.
But basically.
There we go. How's that?
Okay, perfect. So the site that we're specifically talking about citing, um, is that shaded area, the 5.0 acres. Now, if you could click back out one more notch, Mr. Donovan, the parcel is also owned and another, it's another 11 acres or so is where you're moving your mouse, where it says the 11.1 continuous acreage available. And again, that's split zone, but if you look at the bottom there, it only has a small access, which would be commercial. We think that the zoning line is that line right there we're going. And based on what that footprint looks like, um, be honest with you, this is the first I've seen that picture. That's encouraging. We probably are close to good, maybe reserving. And I'm just speaking without the engineer and the architect because this is a franchise dealership. We have to go through franchise approval and architects, but you know, there does appear to be space behind the building. And if we need, I don't know, say 10 or 15 feet for pavement or turning around or that kind of thing. Are, are we in, almost where do we stand with that? Is, are we able to get a use variance possibly for a small strip or? Well, you know, where is that line that Mr. Donovan's mouse is on right now?
Yeah.
Really the line or is that where we're guessing the line is?
Can I ask for some clarifications, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Peter.
Um, so I, I, I think you may know more, Mr. West, than I, than I do about this. There's the, the lot you're, you're, uh, asking about is outlined in gray. Is that right?
Yes, but it's also owned the other one. So if need be, we just extend.
The mobility, right? Okay. And the, the vertical line that passes behind the building where the cursor is now, that's a zoning boundary between which zones and what's on each side of that line.
So we believe that's the line, but on the right side of that line, as we're all looking at the picture, is the RB zone, which allows by right for an auto showroom, auto service station, auto repair shop, auto storage or auto sales room. That, um, basically has its own thing and we understand that there's buffer requirements, 75 feet in the front. We're not worried about that. What we believe is to the left of the line somewhere, probably closer to the line, but who knows if the line is exact, where the mouse is moving around, that is an R30, um, zone. And the hard part is, is that line, well, it's kind of penciled in, is a little bit, um, you know, ambiguous. So that's why we're here.
So you what? Are you asking to have the line better defined or are you asking what is the relationship between the RB business and the R30 storage area?
Well, I, I, R30, you're not allowed to do storage. R30 is residential.
Okay.
So the storage or whatever we're allowed to do in the RB, all of that's allowable by right in the RB. Now, if the planning board is so inclined, we don't really much care where that back line is, as long as that we can go out the needed space, 20, 30 feet off of where our building would be. We're guessing it may, and this is like I said, it's the first I've seen this picture with the map, uh, with the former building on it. There does appear to be some of the space that we need in the back. But if we're short a few feet, are we able to go for a use variance or something to that effect? Or are we going to have to really define?
I don't think you can, I don't think a use variance is even possible in Massachusetts. I, I, I think you can get a, you can get a variance that allows you to, um, increase density or to locate, you know, um, I, I shouldn't say that. I, I don't really know. I, 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 I had the idea that use variances are harder to get than other kinds of variances, but I don't really know that. So are you, are you asking us to read, to move the line if we can, or to just clarify what can be done in the RB behind the building?
I guess yes is the answer to both. Gosh, if that line, if, if, if that line could be, if that line could be moved. Hey, it is almost Christmas. So if we're asking, I'm going to give you a wish list. I mean, ideally, if we can move that line and be happy, that's great. I realize as a planning commission, you know, you don't look at the economics, but if I told you that we're going to employ 40 people at this location, some of them pretty well paid. I mean, if there's a way, which I'd like to think there is that we could put this here, it would be fabulous.
Um, Peg, you have your hand up. Peter, are you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Peg?
Um, hi, um, yes, um, I've looked at the map and you're, I guess, a couple of concerns I have, it just concerns. Um, it's pretty close to Highfield Drive, isn't it? The line there, do you know where those houses are?
I mean, physically or on the map, it's close, but there's a slope that goes up and from about where that line is, is all wood. So you really can't see much.
Okay. All right, um, I probably think we'd have to look at this or maybe get more detail on the net, on the map somehow, or you would have to. I mean, I, I can't just move a line. I mean, I can't do that. I'd have to have the detail to support it. In various ways. Thank you.
All right, um, Peter, how we do not allow contingency for split zone, unfortunately, in our bylaws. How I'm, and, and anybody that, you know, if I'm not speaking properly, let me know here. Um, so if it's not defined as a use, it's basically not a legal use is the problem. So parking lot would be into that residential area. That would be the use. And right now that's not accepted use. However, if you heard our discussion a little, just a few minutes ago, um, we have some new zoning that is going to make that possible, not, not by right, but it would, would be possible in that district. If you had to encroach in that, you know, uh, the argument that it is a accessory use to the dwelling and RB is fine as long as you stayed in RB. Once you go over into the residential, it, you have to abide by that zoning, of course, to what we have right now. I don't like it. I wish we would change that, but we've changed a lot already. So.
I understand. Based on this picture, I think we could be close to okay.
Cause a parking lot, there's no buffer. You, you can go right up to the line. You know, you don't have to give a setback.
So I guess my question here is, if I was formally here tonight with an application saying we're ready to go, can this board approve it based on, is that really the line? Cause no one really seems to know where the line is, is the problem. It's drawn there, but is that really the line?
Is it? Is it on any of the assessor's maps, Peter?
Oh, I don't know. I know that we, we have, oh.
Any, Peter?
No, it's not. I have the assessor's maps. It's not on the assessor's maps, unfortunately.
We have a, uh, we have an official map that I think was done by the planning board 20 years ago or so. And there's a copy of it on the, on the wall of the, of the old planning office. And I think I have even a PDF version of it, but I don't know how accurate this.
Well, that, that's the thing. It's, uh, I'll show you.
I mean, there's the zoning map that was done. Yes, I agree with you, but there's no, um, there's no dimensions on it to define where that line is, is the issue.
Oh. Well, is it just that the line is so thick that you can't really tell exactly where it lies? Is that the problem? You can't locate it from a, from a pencil line that's too wide? Is that the problem?
Here's what we're.
There we go. Great. Good luck. Dave's got his hand up, Buck.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, a question on the rest of this residential part of this lot. Uh, as we all know, that's a steep incline. Uh, is it actual usable property? If somebody wanted to go in there to build homes? Uh, is it actual usable property? If somebody wanted to go in there to build homes, is it possible to do that in, in those conditions? Uh, cause that might have a little, uh, we're bear a little weight on how we decide to, uh, bring this to finality.
I don't, from what I've explored back there and I've been a realtor for thirty-seven years and I've built fifty-something homes. That's some, I wouldn't say it's impossible because I've seen some stuff that I thought was impossible. However, uh, the practicality of it, I think is slim to none because that terrain is it's, it's steep up there, it up there to get up to the road.
And, and we're also splitting the lot again, you know, if you were gonna actually use it, use the commercial section in the front and a residential in the back.
I don't know if there would be any residential actually going in the back behind that part of it.
Right. I know. I just don't know if it'd be feasible to do that. That's a question that weighs in my mind right now. It's.
Yeah, understood. Um, you know, if there's a way to the previous slide that you had, if there was a way to that one there, get some fancy measuring and if that's the line, like I said, that's the first we've seen where the line is in retrospect to the building. You know, based on the size of that building, I'm thinking there possibly could be um, enough in the back there to make that work. Okay, this is what I'm seeing here.
In this zoning line, is this something that is just uh, put into a photo like we're looking at now? Or is this something that has uh, ties to the, a, say, uh, uh, surveyor could actually set the line?
I, I don't know who provided this. I would suggest that Beth probably provided this from somewhere. But this appeared, so that if you look, Mr. Forrest, at the, at the zoning map, there's that line, you know, and as we're looking at this photo to the right is the RB, to the left is the R thirty. The, again, the question is, is that line, say a hundred feet from the road or eighty feet from the road? I, I mean, is it like you say, is that line just in there or how did that line get in there to overlay the, the map like that?
Well, that's why I wonder how anybody could ever question you if we can't reestablish the line. If it's only something that's, uh, put into, uh, an aerial photo.
I, I think somehow we have to define what our lines are. We can't ask the public to do that for us. We should be able to tell Mr. West where the boundary is, in my opinion.
Okay. Again, that brings me back to who has that type of information.
Well, I, I think it might, it might require us to investigate our maps and might require us to spend some money on a surveyor.
Not us.
Yeah, us. Yeah. Why not? Can I, can I raise? Peg's got her hand up, so I'll wait.
No. Okay, thank you. Um, I would think somewhere, whether it be in the registry of deeds or somewhere, someone in your organization, Mr. West, could research it and find exactly where that line is. Um, whether it's a surveyor that you would want or a lawyer that you would want. I mean, uh, I would wanna know where that, where everything.
With all due respect, Ms. Byron, I understand where you're coming from. But to ask us to define where the town line is, is, is a little bit out, uh, that's a little bit out of our purview. We, we're trying to put a business in there and you don't know where your bylaw line is. That's the issue at hand.
That is.
I've already gone one step. You, the building commissioner says that it's, we don't know. It's ambiguous. That's his word, not mine. I've got a whole page here of his opinion as to what this is. And it basically says is that there's, um, nothing like that. We could, um, you know, seek legal counsel and we can, you know, bring legal counsel before this board, but I think that's almost kind of crazy to do because if we were here with a permit tonight asking you to make a decision on this, I would find it a little bit bizarre if you'd say, oh, we don't know where the line is. Come back, tell us where the line is and we'll give you a permit.
I, I don't think, I don't think I said that. I just said, I don't think I said that. No due respect to you. Um, I just feel that, and I understand where you're coming from. I think it's wonderful that we might be bringing new business into town. But I do feel we have to be careful as members of the planning board, all of us, and make the best decision with the most amount of knowledge that we can get. And I did not see a, the building inspector must have made or commissioner must have sent you something. I am not privy to it or have not been. And I'd be happy to read it over and and assess what has been said.
So ba- basically, and I'll be glad to forward this to Beth and she can send it to everybody. A parcel split by a district boundary line is not addressed in the Lee zoning. So I would determine that each zoning district has its own individual requirement. I would read it is a use allowed in one zone, but not the other can only be allowed in a portion, et cetera, et cetera, which we're not there. I mean, we're not looking to do this. All we're trying to figure out is where that line is so we can determine whether we can put a business there or not. And I think this comes down to something and it's nobody hears issue fault, but unfortunately, unless somebody knows where it is in the book somewhere, no, how do we determine where that line is? When, when the zoning was planted in that last redo twenty-something years ago, was that specifically written in there that says from Pleasant Street a hundred and eighty feet? I'm just plucking a number, two hundred and eighty feet or five hundred feet back in a westerly direction, you know, where is that line? I like the line we saw on the screen here. I'm, I'm okay with that line. That works. But we don't really unfortunately know if that line on, that's been imposed on these maps is really the line or not. That's unfortunately where we're sitting here, because if it was there, we'd either be coming to you with a formal thing or we would have taken our bags and looked for another site.
Right, right.
Let me see. And I believe the bowling alley, when it was built, was pre that zoning, so that won't answer us on anything either.
I think Dave is next, Buck.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, uh, I, I really believe that it's the town's responsibility to, uh, come up with a exact location for this line, no matter how it happens, so that we can enforce our zone. Uh, we can't ask the developer to do that. Uh, it's, you know, it's, it's our line in place on the map that I, I truly believe that the town should relocate that line so we can make an intelligent decision on whether we can proceed or not.
Right, I agree.
I don't disagree with that. It's all right.
Peter?
Yeah, I agree with Dave. I, as, uh, basically it's the same thing I said before. I think when somebody comes to the town saying, can I do X? And we go to that, we have to go to the map and we say, what zone is it in? And if it's near the edge of the zone, I think it's our business and our responsibility to figure out where that boundary is and to explain that to the landowner. Um, but what I wanted to talk about more than that is to raise a different issue. It looks to me like, I don't know what they were thinking, or maybe some of you were involved when we did this zoning, drawing that line. Um, but it looks to me like there's a huge dead area behind these lots. And being on Route one oh two and being a couple of miles from the interstate exit, that's valuable land. And it looks like it's landlocked. There's a lot of acreage back there that's practically landlocked. And, um, this, it seems unlikely to me, given the complete development on Highfield Drive, that um, anybody is gonna be cutting down into there for a residential development. So, um, I think the question we should be asking ourselves is what's the highest and best use for that landlocked area back there? And, and I, I think we should seriously discuss moving the boundary by amending the bylaw, moving it back closer to the back line of those residential lots on Highfield Drive. This would open up a fairly large area to RB and increase the opportunity for commercial development on one oh two, which is just where I think we want it to, to occur.
Agreed, Peter. I, I think the intent back then was a, uh, some protectionism for Highfield Drive to have a big buffer area against the commercial district. It would, would be my guess. We, we saw a lot of that. You know, we've noticed a lot through the years of when they wrote this bylaw, they did a lot of that, you know, with the restaurants, you know, with the outlet village, they wouldn't let them have sit-down restaurants. They had, you know, A-Rod, you can't, couldn't have a restaurant until recently. Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't have to be, wouldn't have to be right up to their back line either, you know, it could be.
No.
It could have a fifty-foot barrier or something with, with, which is residential, leaving, leaving room for the occasional extra residential lot in, in the second tier back there. But I don't even see how they're gonna get into a second lot, you know? It looks like everything is fully developed edge to edge all the way along there. Um, but you know, we don't, we don't, my question isn't whether we need to go precisely to the back, back lot lines of the Highfield Drive people, but whether we should try to move the line a little bit to the left to try and open up for more possibilities for commercial development on one oh two.
You know, we also have this area up in here that already has gone over that line.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so what, um, that, that makes it difficult for us now. I'm really not sure how that happened.
What is that? What is that? Do you know, Buck?
That, that's a landscape company up in there. It was greenhouses. I think they built a regular shop now. And I, I imagine the building inspector looked at the plot plan and just saw the property lines. He didn't see there, there's no zoning lines on a property on a plot plan.
Agricultural use.
Um, maybe. Maybe. Yeah, it's a fixed building. It's not a greenhouse anymore, though. So.
Well, if, if, if the car dealer wants to get going, this is not gonna be a solution for them quickly because as I mentioned, we've got a whole batch of things rolling forward already that we, we're gonna start a new batch, but um, it's gonna be a while until any, any bylaw in them that could even get considered by the town, even if the board voted in favor of it. So I'm glad to hear, um, that maybe they can do it under the existing arrangements. Especially if we get the new, the current batch through and they can have a so-called parking lot on their, uh, on their back lot, that would be, uh, that would probably make things more attractive for them.
Yeah. Oh, I, I think we gotta talk around Town Hall and, uh, find out how we define where that boundary is, or if it's just an arbitrary line. And as long as they don't encroach too much on the, onto it, I mean, I guess it's up to our discretion. Where, where that, you know, who knows where that line is? They, if they can't say it's that a surveyor can say, here's the line, that's a little tough for us to say you can't put your parking lot there. If we can't define it.
Right.
Well, I, I think we need to move ahead as quickly as possible. I realize we have some hurdles to, to jump, but uh, we always look for employment in town, jobs. Uh, this is gonna employ forty to fifty people. Uh, this is something we really gotta look into and, uh, as quickly as we can.
Peter, uh, Mr. West, if you, um, if you guys brought us a site plan and you, um, were very close to that line, I think we, we, we would be fine with it.
Okay, timing is gonna be perfect because I'm meeting tomorrow with the owner of the dealership and the Berkshire, um, area manager. I've already had the franchise out there, so we're good there. Let me meet with them and then we will, um, talk with the surveyor, um, on our end and see about putting a site plan together and what it looks like. And Beth, if I could email you to get this sketch would be fabulous. I don't know where this came from, but this one would be very helpful.
Before we end, did, did you say that the, the parcel to the, the area to the left is RA forty, Mr. West?
No, the thirty. Thirty. So, um, the, the parcel to the left is thirty and then, you know, it, it's again split that eleven point one continuous acres available. I mean, the majority of that piece is a R thirty and you got, I don't know, fifty feet on one side and a hundred feet on the other side of the motel there.
Well, I, I ask that because there is a provision in our bylaw. Um, and the, the board may wanna spend a minute thinking about this. Um, it's the last paragraph in the list of permitted uses for our twenty and our thirty. It's paragraph D, three D. And paragraph three is titled, uses requiring a special permit from the Board of Appeals. And, um, is any accessory used to a by right use, whether or not on the same parcel? Um, oh, it has to do, I'm sorry, it has to do with scientific research and development. No. No, it doesn't, it doesn't help. Sorry. Wasted your time. Apologize.
Oh, you had a little hope there, Peter. Thank you.
I like the thinking and I like your open this year, so.
I often start well, but you know, finishing is hard.
Hope is good, though. So somehow or another, we're gonna try to investigate this more to find out. Right? Okay.
Yes, and, and Mr. West is gonna see if he can put together a site plan for us.
Yep. We, we worked with, um, Steve Mack out at ForeSite in West Pittsfield, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
I know, and, and see, boy, it's almost one of those things if you, if you went to the, I'm pretty sure that's how that property happened. Is that they went for a building permit and nobody ever really realized that the lot was split zone. They looked at just what the lot was, the frontage was zoned as. So. Um, so shit, it's, it's tough. Cause there, there's your neighbor built something in that zone, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I guess, you know, my client would say, you should gotta stop being so thorough.
I'd be real upset right now. But, um, like you say, if, if it's a few, I mean.
And again, you know, you've all said it, is it two feet over? We don't even know where the darn line is, so we may be pretty close to okay.
And, and if, if we don't know the, where the line is, how can we tell you it's two feet over? It's gonna be my issue. Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. West. Well.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and we'll be back to you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Next up, uh, oh, shoot. Sign permits, fifty-five Pusatonic.
Is this the gas station thing?
I believe it is.
Citco. Is it Citco? Citco. Is it Citco?
Says ExxonMobil on the thing I'm looking at.
Oh.
In your packet.
Okay.
They're gonna, they they really want those signs, man. They're gonna have the synergy logo sign is gonna be on the post, but it's gonna be blank, but they still want it.
Sure.
Maybe they think we'll give up someday.
Maybe.
A mystery sign, the sign that almost was.
And if if you look through your packet, you'll see the uh, let's see how they wanna do the
Lighting?
The lighting, yeah. English is a second language here.
I I just wanna say I've been making a bit of a study of this gas station lighting business. And I got a app for my phone that turns it into a light meter. I went around last Friday and after dark and measured the light intensity hitting the ground underneath canopies in various places in Lee and in Pittsfield. And it was some surprising numbers, which I would like to discuss with you in detail at the next meeting, but I do wanna say that at the O'Connell's Mobile at the north end of town on Main Street, the brightest place on the ground was where these fascia lights were shining down on the ground, brighter than the gas pumps, the top of the gas pumps.
Yeah. This.
I think we told her she could do it. So I think we're probably committed, but I don't think this is a good, good direction for Lee to be going, and I wanna talk with the board about changing the bylaw to prohibit this kind of lighting.
I don't, I think, I really think if they keep it within their their perimeter. You know, like you said, it's more of a direct downlighting.
Well, it makes their sign, their sign sixty feet wide, Buck. I mean, why have a sign by law if you can allow them to have a colored logo right next to it that's lit up like like Coney Island?
You you could light up to the entire side of your building like that, too.
Yeah, you could.
That's that's the the slip, the kind of the slippery slope we get in, we got into last time with putting color as part of a sign.
I just think it's it's, all the gas stations have this downlighting, and it's all for safety to cover their area where the people pull in and I don't feel like it is a distraction. I feel like it's focused down. And it doesn't bother me. But I feel like gas stations are on their own anyways. They have their own, I mean, don't they have their own state mandate of certain lighting and stuff for safety?
Not aware of that. I know there's kind of an industry standard that's going on, and these lights are part of it.
I I did a little research in it. I don't know, I didn't get to down to the level of industry code. I did get a Sherwin Law, who's a lighting designer up in Burlington, Vermont, he sent me something that Vermont did a few years ago with recommended municipal policies for downlighting on on these islands, these canopies, and they recommended a minimum of one foot candle and a maximum of, I think, ten and a half. And we have none that are that low. The big Y, which I thought was pretty bright, is fifteen. The shell is thirty-eight. The Sunoco out near Peg's house is forty-seven. So, yeah, you know, it, the thing is, the eye, the human eye is not very good at measuring differences in lighting levels. We're good at, we're good at seeing one building that's bright versus the one next to it that's not so bright. But to tell whether one building in the north end of town is bright and the other building in the similar building in the southern ten is not bright is very hard for us to do because you know, the level of lighting that our eyes automatically adjust to without us being aware of it is enormous. I mean, it's like the reading, you know, you can read it, I think, ten foot candles. And daylight was like thirty-two thousand foot candles, and your eye adapts, you know, you can do it both places. So it's very hard for human eye to generally judge the light. But I I I think these gas stations and now maybe the upcoming car dealer are gonna be our big, big sources of light pollution, and I don't think our bylaw addresses light pollution at all, and maybe it, maybe the people we don't care about that. But there's an awful lot of unnecessary light that's being cast in order to attract customers. It's not for safety, it's for attracting customers. If it's more than ten foot candles, at least according to those Vermont people. Anyway, that's my pitch for next time. I'll tell you in more detail next time.
That's interesting.
Um, yeah, I.
I think on this one, we we told her she could do it, didn't we?
Uh, yeah, we were looking for more information.
Oh. No, I don't think so, Buck. I think we told her that the facial lighting was okay. It was the what we wanted was to know how much was coming out through the translucent cover of the Exxon sign. I don't know if Beth got that message across to her or not, but that was what I wanted.
Yeah, I thought we were, we were looking for what this lighting was like also. Okay. But that's all we got from them was this. The blade sign.
I still don't know that we have what the lighting level is of the
We we don't, we we don't have a, we don't have a a number on an internally illuminated sign. We only have one that's externally illuminated. We say how much you can shine.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Kim, are we prepared to say that an internally illuminated sign, which is allowed, should not be brighter than an externally illuminated sign?
If that was in our bylaw, we could.
So we get, you think we have nothing to say about the brightness of her sign? Okay.
I I don't know. I'm I'm looking.
Yeah. No, I think you're right. I think we, the the bylaw, I I spent some time with it today. I think the bylaw talks about external lighting and assumes that there are, there are no internally lit signs, but there are internally lit signs in the CBC district.
Yeah.
This is one of them.
Yeah.
So I don't think we do have a standard. Okay. I guess I'm for letting it go.
Yeah, there's to preserve the internally illuminated signs are not allowed zoning districts. These signs may be externally illuminated by shielded light of constant intensity, no more than than a total of fifteen hundred lumens. Internally internally illuminated freestanding and wall signs are allowed in the CBC zoning district with a permit issued after approval of part of a site plan review process.
Oh. So is this a site plan? We don't, we don't have a site plan.
No.
No.
I mean, I think, I think we could say no. I don't, I don't know if we should, given what we said last time, but.
Well, that's what's been odd, too, is, you know, they they reference this site plan, but it it's it's hard because if they change a sign, they have to do an entirely new site plan. This has never made sense.
Where's the site plan? There is no site plan, is there?
No, no, but in in our bylaws, it references it. That it is, I think they wanted it to be part of the site plan. But how they worded it, it almost reads like every time they wanna do this, they gotta have another site plan.
Yeah, it does.
Which is, which is ridiculous, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a mistake.
So it's a sign permit. I'm not gonna fight this. I mean, I, you know, we don't have anything right now to go on. What, what do, you know, how are we gonna say no?
Okay, so make a motion now.
By saying no?
No, to say.
But we could.
Well, we could, but I don't know.
Or, yeah, I understand what Peter's saying. Are we letting these gas stations getting, get out of hand?
I don't know. I don't think so, but.
The, this lighting here doesn't even fall under our signs either. It it is under, you know, a a building. Building or site plan.
Our bylaw is really inadequate to do what I wanna do.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you, Peter.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to endorse. All in favor?
What's the address on this?
Fifty-five.
Yeah.
I'm I'm making motion to endorse the sign permit for fifty-five Pousatonic Street.
My second.
Second. Roll call, Peg?
Is it fifty-five or is it one forty-five?
No, it's fifty-five. One forty-five is Starbucks, I believe.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is for fifty-five.
This is for, yeah, hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Buck, I. Sign is endorsed. Up next, one forty-five.
Just a side note, you know, if 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 ever it becomes an issue where we get complaints, I think we could, you know, call them up and and discuss the lighting with them, you know, if we needed, needed to. I don't think that's impossible to do. But anyways.
Well, the good news about this place is that the ten, the tendency is if your neighbor, your next door neighbor has a business that just doubled the lighting and you're in any way in competition with them, you need to double your own lighting.
Yeah.
The good news, the good news here is that they have no business neighbors, but they do have people across the street and stuff who are gonna see more light at night, I think. But, all right, we're done.
I don't know why my screen went blue.
I was wondering that.
You get to read your email, Buck.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. Well.
You want me to post it?
I'll just start over again. Close it out.
How are your new digs, Beth?
So I would say.
I think Peter froze.
Oh.
You're locked from here. I was just wondering how your new arrangements are. At the office.
Okay. I have a little, a little cubby in the corner of the building apartment.
Oh.
Hmm.
Not, not the closet, right?
Quite.
Not quite. You know, we 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 wanted you in that office, but we didn't want you in the closet. We're sorry. I mean, I don't know what happened.
No, it's fine. I, we moved, we seriously moved the desk four times this week, and I I'm right where I wanna be, so it's it's good.
Okay. Okay, so we have Starbucks up next.
We got it.
Okay, now this, this legend here I found helpful. It shows you where they're putting their signs. As you go through the prints, you'll see D sign, A, E, C, and then so on, okay?
Yeah.
Only one. There's the west. That one's seems okay to me. This one seemed to be a problem. Is that one hundred percent a roof sign?
Right.
Eve, it's not on a flat surface.
Plus, how do they get two building signs?
That too.
I agree.
You know, I'm not, I don't disagree. It's it's just funny because they do this all over, right? Every town, I think they do the same sign plan.
Let's see. We're in CBC. Yeah. They're allowed one building sign. And they can have a free sign, freestanding sign.
Which they will have, right?
Yep.
So there one sign over the quota.
Yep.
How about sigh? I guess we have to wait until they decide what kind of sign, single building sign they want before we start measuring sizes, huh?
Yep. So I I would say right now, I'm looking for sign D. Right here, that's gonna be their rote, their freestanding sign.
That's right, with the friendly sign was.
Yes.
Their drive-through sign and all that is okay?
Oh, yeah, those are directional signs, right? Is that where we put that?
I think it's on page twenty-eight, Buck, if that helps you.
Okay, here I'm.
There it is.
Yeah, there we go, yeah. I mean, that's a, that's, the size is fine.
I'm sure it is.
That logo, that logo is almost international now. Especially if you're under thirty.
They're doing a good job with the site down there.
It is. Yeah.
They were paving it today.
Black closes Thursday.
Oh.
Wow, wow.
Their freestanding sign, I'm assuming, is fifteen feet off the road.
It's probably in the same mount where the the other one was.
Yeah, I would think. I didn't see.
Off the road or on the public way?
Yeah. Um, so basically, the the two issues are the roof sign and the logo making it a roof sign and no, and then a two, two signs and no.
Yeah, I think we can approve everything but the roof sign if we wanna do that, and then they can come back. They'd rather adjust their building sign to a different way. They can come back again.
Well, here's the thing, is is that Well, here's the thing, is, is that logo a sign?
That's what I was gonna ask.
The logo on the west end of the building?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think we do define it too, by the way. What a sign is.
Let's see.
Any dis, any display of lettering logos? Oh, colors, lights or illuminated neon tubes visible. To the public from outside of the building or from a traveled way. Which either conveys a message to the public or intends to advertise, direct, invite, announce, or draw attention to directly indirectly. A use conducted or goods, products, services, or facilities available either on the lot or. On any other premises excluding window displays of merchandise.
Wow.
That's a sign.
That's a sign.
Where do you get that, what are you reading that, Buck?
Under sign.
Yeah. Seven, seven, three, A.
Number?
It's not numbered, just, it's not numbered, it's just under the sign definition.
Definitions.
I'm not finding it in my book. Is it?
It's seven point three.
A.
Definition, seven.
Oh, it's the third, it's, it's, it's out of order, that's why I couldn't find it, okay.
Oh.
I'm on, I'm on E code, so it's, I think.
The first three are their own system and then it starts over in four, it starts over with the A's again.
And in E code, they must have put them all alph, alphabetical.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
I see, okay. Well, good for them then.
See, the E code is good.
Yeah. Cause.
So, so listen, I, um, would it help if I moved to approve or endorse this application all but for the roof sign?
I think that would.
I'll second it.
I'm in favor.
Okay, and. Let's see, let's define the roof sign.
Which is, was B, wasn't it?
It was sign. Signed C and B. Cause they're doing a directional. See, they also said drive-through here.
Think that's.
So C and B.
Yeah, do we allow that drive-through up there?
No.
No.
It's still a roof sign.
Is this really gonna look bad?
I'll amend my motion if I may to just. That we endorse the application except for signs B and C.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, Peter?
I.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Buck, I. All right. This, you know, you have a team of engineers and you know they had to. You would flip through our. Zoning laws before you submit on this. But um, oh well.
We're, we're, we're hard on that, no roof signs, even that, that one.
It's, it's not, it's not the best organized document.
No. I mean, it, yeah.
I agree.
It's tough on a computer, if this was laying on a table with big sets of prints, it would make more sense.
Yeah.
Right.
On the computer stuff. Uh, let's see, now we're to any other topics. About poor Beth being in the closet guy.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to uh, circulate that Vermont document for the board's reading and discussion for next time. Just to see what people's reaction to it is. Yeah, I, the illumination study and the recommendations from this Vermont task force, it's about fifteen years old, I think, maybe longer. Um, and it may be out of date, it doesn't reflect LED technology to be sure, but. The light levels and the concerns about, you know, over lighting are something that I think we just haven't talked about. And um, I don't, I got into it because. I spent some time this afternoon trying to start on our sign by law and. When I got into the stuff about the gas stations, I started thinking about the lighting, the, the brightness issue and. We do have some things in our bylaw that say that you can't shine spotlights on neighbors' houses and that sort of thing, but it's all pretty rough. And uh, I just, I'd like to talk with the board at the next meeting about, if we can have it on the agenda, about whether we. Want to do something a little bit more systematic than we have. So I'll, if it's all right, I'll just send that out and um, ask people to discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
And um, we're, is. Also on that, the sign topic, I, I believe we, we reached out to Jeremiah. Um, about helping us, giving us some templates for the. Uh, I guess they'd be called free speech signs. Political signs, so, no word back.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's that hard, um, we can talk about the details next time, but um. I, I think there are only two or three adjustments we need to make to the political signs, a definite, the definition definitely needs a change. And um, and rules, I think we need rules about. Signs on utility poles and, you know, I think we need to toggle a few things, but I'll have a proposal for you if that's all right. For discussion, hope nobody minds that I took that initiative.
Get the legwork done. Uh, Peg, what do you have?
I just was some wondering um, if um. When you call the office, um, could Beth maybe voice come over the, if you call?
I, I don't know what you mean.
So every, every time my phone gets unplugged, it goes back to the generic. Uh, voice message, so I just have to reset the voicemail, but we unplugged it so much last week that I wanted to really make sure this was the last time.
Oh, good, all right, so eventually Beth will hear your voice when we call the office, okay, thank you.
Who is, who is our zoning enforcement officer right now, by the way?
Oh, I was gonna ask that too, good. I don't know.
Is Don Fitzgerald or is um, Ryan? Which, Don, I guess.
Beth, do you know?
Yeah, it's, it's Don Fitzgerald right now.
Thank you.
He, he's in Texas. So um, Ryan has been going on the road with someone who is retired named Bill. For.
Okay.
Thornton.
Oh.
He was from Lenox, yeah.
Wow, he is, he can be tough.
Yeah, very, from what I've heard.
Yeah, the, yeah, from what I hear from a lot of the contractors, he has a tough time with them.
So, I think we need a conversation with the zoning enforcement officer about where that line is on Pleasant Street. And uh, I, if he can't find that line, I don't know how we can do anything with zoning. Uh, you know, if you don't know what the lines are, I don't know how we can even do day-to-day work.
So, I think, I think that's a, I think that zoning, I, is, I want to say RB might be two hundred feet back. And then it switches over, but um, it's gotta be somewhere in our bylaw or in our zoning, but uh. Uh, the town, sir, I mean, surveyors probably can. Figure that out.
I wonder if we could ask Don to just give us a report at the next meeting. About a procedure for determining that line.
I think that'd be great.
Do we need a motion for that, or can we just do it by consent, Mr. Chairman?
I think uh, we can just convey our wishes to Beth and she'll get it done. She does that, this is so great now. Except the minutes, you know, she was too, didn't, didn't get to those this week.
Four times, my goodness.
I guess uh, yeah, uh, Gordon was gonna be here tonight, I talked to him earlier, but I guess they're doing a. What, a town administrator search committee, so he was involved with that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good.
Move to adjourn?
So move. All right, thank you.
Hey, thanks. See you next time.
Happy Thanksgiving all.
Yeah.
Thank you.